Hi, I'm Noah with Renters Together. And today we're interviewing Monica McFarlane for City Commissioner. Monica, if you would like to briefly introduce, you know, who you are and where you're from.
Sure. I'm Monica McFarlane. I grew up in California, in the San Francisco Bay Area. And before coming here to Manhattan, I lived overseas and on the East Coast due to my husband's military career. We moved here Thanksgiving week of 2011. So I've been here just short of a decade, but it'll be a decade here pretty quick. I started at K-State in the fall of 2012. And I earned a Bachelor's of Arts in Public, or I'm sorry, Political Science. I also got a certificate in Primary Text. And then I went on for a Master's in Public Administration. And I am currently working in the Grain Science Department up at K-State. I have for the last three years as the department head's admin, but also as the graduate program assistant coordinator. And I started a doctoral program last year. So in the midst of a pandemic, of course, it was a great time to start a doctoral program. But so I've been here a while. I've obviously studied government in different capacities. And my son went through MHK through schools, through USD 383. He graduated from MHS in 2019. He just finished his associates at Barton on post. And my husband has since retired. So we are now in the community on a permanent basis. And he is working on his doctoral at K-State in the History Department.
Very cool. So we're just gonna start off with some basic questions. So like, what motivated you to run for City Commissioner for the city of Manhattan, Kansas?
I would say it was a conglomeration of several things. One is, over the years, I've become very passionate about public service, promoting civic engagement within local communities. I, like I stated, my education at K-State was basically within government, whether that be political science and the groundwork, and then public administration through my masters. I did two internships as part of my master's program at the city of Manhattan. I was in the HR department both times for that. I spent four months doing an applied research project for the city on their performance reviews. When I had started my first internship with them, I was tasked to help initiate a employee satisfaction survey. They had done these previously over the years, but they wanted something that kind of encapsulated some things about what people may want for different type of flex benefits, whether that be, you know, flex vacation days, or whether they wanted to see in their healthcare programs, how they wanted to try and maybe adapt their time off, PTO schedules. So they had asked for different things to be developed in there. During that first internship, I gave that survey. And then I went and compiled the data along with another intern from our program and found that the top five areas of dissatisfaction had to do with pay and with performance evaluation program. So made this, you know, findings to the city. And they asked us to take a look at the performance reviews and how, what best practices and how to train and do those things. So that was four months of research and put together a whole presentation to them. And then was asked to come back for a second internship to actually train the city supervisors on how to do best practices in performance evaluations. So that's how I got into the city. But I mean, I've, like I said, I've lived other places before coming here. And some of the places I lived, I, there were some services that were just not done well at all. I lived at a place where I actually had the water come out of the tap orange and I couldn't drink it, couldn't use it to cook. So I had to always have five gallon jugs of water on hand to brush my teeth and to cook with. And then I've lived other places where it's been phenomenal. We've had great public transportation systems. We've had great library systems, arts programs, so, and urban renewal efforts. So these things that I've seen done and seen done well. And I, you know, coming here in Manhattan, seeing things that I'm like, wouldn't it be nice if we had this too? So maybe kind of want to go, hey, you know what? We could have this.
That's awesome. What life experiences do you possess that you feel best prepare you for City Commissioner?
Well, besides just general life experiences, living in different places and seeing the various services like I've mentioned, I would also say being a parent in this community and being a volunteer in this community. I have for many years volunteered at the Manhattan Art Center. I've also was involved when my son was in scouts. And there's different programs up at K-State. When I was in the MPA program, was one of the students to help found the Student Stakeholders Committee and actually take a role in how that program actually interacted with practitioners coming in to give like presentations to our classmates and explain what, you know, work they did out there and what a typical day looks like for them and different skill sets that people need when going into the work field. And, you know, it's a large military community. I also was a military wife for many years. But I've also been, you know, had different capacities in the city as well. Not only been a student, but I've been an employee here as well. And, you know, I feel like I've got a variety of different things that would give a different type of perspective. I've also been a homeowner and also a rental tenant myself. So had those capacities within the community.
Very nice. And what political party would you most closely align with and why?
So because the nature of the race is not affiliated, I'm going to decline to answer that question.
Okay. So does party affiliation matter to you? Why or why not?
I do believe party affiliation matters. And I guess it's because of the fact that the nation is so polarized. But it's hard because I believe the, both sides are very passionate about how they, the things that they care about. And, and I think they believe they're going about it the right way. Unfortunately, it doesn't leave much room for compromise or for civil discourse, which is something I absolutely believe wholeheartedly in. You know, I, my best friend and I are one of the people that, you know, I was in the MPA program with for a long time. We were on totally different sides on most issues. But we had very respectful conversations with each other. I would go to things with her, she'd come to things with me. We left things very open minded. It was not a, hey, if you don't agree with me, then we can't, you know, be friends or whatever. But there are just basic respect lines that have to be followed. And people have to look at each other as human. And I think when, with a deep level of humanity, and I think when you disregard those type of issues that people hold like severe core, this is part of who I am, a part of my history, or, you know, part of what, you know, makes me me. And you disregard that, then it makes it really difficult to move forward.
Okay. When it comes to policy, passing legislation or making any important decisions whatsoever, what is the most important thing to consider before taking any type of action?
So there are several things that have to be considered. It's not just one. The first thing is gonna be, what do I know about this? Okay. You have to be willing to go do the research. And usually, whatever issue it is that you're gonna be looking at, you should be looking at those who are the closest to the issue for some information on this and some ideas on how to handle the issue. Then it's a, kind of like looking through multiple lenses of things. It's like, what's, is this the policy option that's actually correct for this particular case? Is this policy actually fair or just? Is there some type of legal or ethical consideration I have to make? You know, as a commissioner, there's a lot of rules and ordinances. It's not like a, hey, I can just willy nilly decide whatever I want to do. That it doesn't work that way. But, you know, trying to understand too, who has the power within this decision? Who is it being shared with? Who wasn't, you know, given a chance to say anything? Was there somebody who was purposely shut out or silenced? Then you also have to look at who's gonna benefit from what I decide, you know? And is somebody, somebody gonna be the, I'm sorry to say they felt like the loser, but who's going to be hurt by my choice, you know? There's always gonna be somebody who's not happy. And is that a short term thing or is that a long term thing? You know, what's gonna be the, if I choose something today, five years from now, that still could impact the city? You know, some of these decisions that commissioners make now, like on the budget, it's not gonna be the same commission team that's sitting up there unless, of course, the three people who are, you know, running right now for their seats get reelected. But it's possible there would be some turnover there. And that's not the same commission that made that decision, you know? But that budget is gonna impact two years from now. It's not gonna be, you know, three months from now. So something I make a decision on, I could leave office and it could still be doing something to the community, you know? I also have to look at what's in the best interest of the community. There's various people and groups within here that have different wants and needs. So, and then there's also, you know, what other professional or ethical codes that I need to uphold as a commissioner or my own personal ethics that I don't want to violate?
Right. Okay. Now, how will you get other members of the city commission to endorse policies that you introduce or support?
So this takes teamwork. And it's gonna start off by being willing to listen to what they have to say. When I was, one of the things that I care a lot about, and you'll probably hear it over and over again throughout the months coming up, is transparency. It's not just something you say, it's something you do. The commission has the ability to either hear issues about public and can decide whether or not to open them up for discussion. That takes three out of five commissioners for something to end up on the agenda. Whether or not I agree with what comes forward, I do not believe in agenda setting. So I may be completely against an issue or completely for it. But if they ask if it can be discussed, I'm going to say yes. Because there are enough people in the community who want that to be discussed and should be able to have their voice heard. So I feel like by at least being open and willing to hear what the other side has to say, I would hope that my fellow commissioners would be just as respectful and extend that same courtesy back.
Nice. Next one is, will you hold others accountable, especially when they say one thing, but choose not to act on that said thing?
So this is kind of hard to do in practice. I mean, I can be accountable to myself and what I say I'm going to do and obviously be very transparent about what I'm doing. Go on the record, you know, put out public statements about what's going on, how I will, how I look at an issue. If I have come with more information that's come to me that makes me reconsider being open about that as well. Like, hey, here's why I'm reconsidering this. Let me lay this out for you. Of course, if somebody else has told me, hey, I'm willing to work with you on this and, you know, this is what's going on. And then we get up there and they say, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not for that. I will call out and ask, hey, can you clarify? We've been discussing this for the last five, six months. We had, you know, it sounded like these were the things that you were on board with. Why not? I can't make anybody else on that commission do something. I can work with them. It is up to the public to hold their commissioners accountable for what they say they're going to do. And if they don't, then don't reelect them.
Awesome. So these next questions are gonna be focusing on safe housing. Students and workers are continuing to experience unsafe housing conditions despite the city of Manhattan's rental registration program. Finding safe housing in Manhattan can be a gamble, which puts renters' health and, in extreme cases, their lives at risk. You are running for City Commissioner on safe housing through rental inspections. So can you explain more about how rental inspections would work? But, you know, like talking about rental housing license or annual inspections? And how effective do you think they would be at ensuring renters aren't put into unsafe housing conditions?
I appreciate the question and I do understand the situation that is within the city. And I do absolutely find it unacceptable. I, like I stated earlier, have been both a tenant and a homeowner here in Manhattan. I, as well as a tenant, had some unsafe conditions in my home and was very surprised to find out when I had called the city for an inspection before I moved in that that was not something that they still did. You could, of course, you know, have somebody come out, but it wasn't a program like it was required. And it was in other communities I had lived in. So that was a little bit surprising to me. I, you know, have asked questions about it before, over the years. And like I said, I've, they've been in other communities I've been in. So I was very adamant that I thought it should be here. There was a previous city commissioner, Jared McGee, who had put in, I'm sorry, Key, who put in efforts for about two years to put in a rental inspection program. And he called me right away when he heard that I was running on this and said, hey, here's what we've looked at. Here's what we think would work pretty well. And I went out and looked at the program that he had mentioned to me, which I was very thankful for. Like you said, go to the people who are the closest to the problem to find out what you can do. And Lawrence has a pretty good inspection program. And so I would look at putting one in place that's modeled after Lawrence's. It would include both licensing and inspections. I do believe, like you, that registration is not nearly enough to address these issues. What would happen, or how I would try and frame it, would be first that a property would be licensed. When the property becomes licensed, then the landlord would get a notice from the city saying that they are due for inspection. That's when it initially is licensed. After that, then it would be on a rotating schedule and it would probably be about every three years. Once the landlord got the notice that, hey, the inspection is coming up, it would probably be somewhere between 30 to 45 days, saying, please, within this time, get in touch with your tenant and contact us with the time that we can go in to do the inspection. Part of that would be to obtain the tenant's signature, their consent to actually do the inspection. Okay? Now, understand, a landlord has no legal obligation to get that tenant to sign for the city. Now, they can request it and they can let us know that a tenant would not give a consent. And then the city could contact the tenant themselves, saying, hey, we would like access to do this. But if the tenant refused, then the city would have to obtain a search warrant to do the inspection. Okay? We don't want to violate anybody's rights. You do have a right to say whether or not somebody comes into the home. This type of issue, people are trying to deal with safe housing. I would assume that you wouldn't have too many tenants who would try to keep you from seeing their housing conditions if they were having issues. They're actually wanting you there. But once the tenant has given the permission, then they would coordinate an inspection date and time with the city. And then the city would come out and conduct that inspection. The inspection program is looking really at items of vital importance to health and safety of tenants. It's not looking at, you know, the nitty gritty of, hey, you've got, you know, a house that was built in 1920 and we're trying to get you to update the walls so that you have a light socket every 10 feet or whatever. It's actually, hey, do you have exposed wiring? Do you have cracks in your foundation? Do you have problems with water? Do you have proper heat and cooling in the home? Do you have certain setups in the kitchen, you know, so that you actually have safe preparation of food? These type of things. And so they would be inspected on those items. And then they would have a opportunity landlords would, if they passed the inspection, to not be inspected again. In three years, they would get a grace period. So it wouldn't be for six, unless the tenant, you know, of the property says, hey, I've got an issue and call up to the city and then the city goes, okay, well, yeah, I need to come back in and take a look. Failure to either complete inspection, that's not on the tenant's end because we'd have to get the search warrant. But if a landlord failed to comply, because what we would try to do is actually go and inspect those properties that aren't resided in right away, try and make sure that they're taken care of before you get a tenant in there. I know, it's a great concept, right? Get them inspected and make sure that they're safe before you put a tenant in. But failure to complete an inspection or correct the violations would then cause the rental license to be either put on probation or revoked. So it's much like a business, you know? You have a service that you are providing to the public that can affect their health and welfare. Therefore, you need to be licensed.
Very good. There are some people who push back on this. I haven't heard any tenants push back on this, but some property owners. So what would you say to those that say that mandatory housing inspections infringe on property rights? Or is against the Fourth Amendment of US Constitution, which protects from unreasonable searches and seizures done by the government? And say that these are not necessary?
Well, I would state, like I did before, that when you have a rental property and you are not the main dweller of that property, you have turned that property into a business. You are providing a service that impacts the health and welfare of citizens and residents within the city. And therefore, you are a business. You should be licensed. You should be inspected, just like restaurants are inspected to make sure that they're not going to make people ill. I also think that they are necessary. How else are you supposed to protect the health and welfare of your citizens if you're not willing to make sure that the house isn't gonna collapse in on them? Or that they're not going to have some unhealthy mold that they're bringing, breathing in all the time? Or that they haven't been told that, hey, by the way, you can't have this many people in the house because it's a fire safety hazard? Or, hey, did you know you live in a floodplain? These are things that, you know, when you go and get a license for the house to be rented, part of that licensing would be showing, hey, you have a document that shows that, yes, you are in a floodplain and you've shown that to your tenant. You've also shown the tenant how many people are allowed to be in this dwelling based on the city ordinance. It's, it's not against the Fourth Amendment because at, what the way this would be structured is that you would have to give, first off, notice, an ample notice, somewhere between, like I said, 30 to 45 days. And then you would have to get the tenant's consent. And if they won't provide the consent, then you get a search warrant, which therefore does not violate because you have a warrant.
Very good. So these next questions are gonna be focusing on affordable housing in Manhattan.
Okay.
Affordable housing continues to be a challenge faced by many, if not all, cities in the United States. Virtually every decent sized city has some homeless population or has had some homeless population at some point. And homelessness is a major problem in most cities, including here in Manhattan. There are some tools in our toolbox that we can use to potentially solve or alleviate these issues. Tools such as community land trusts, which allow the public to set the terms and set the rent. When it comes to homelessness, Finland provides the homeless with an apartment and counseling. Other cities have given a few thousand dollars to homeless, while others have given them tiny homes to live in. There are, these are just a few examples on how some have approached affordable housing and homelessness. What approach would you take to increase the number of affordable housing units in Manhattan?
So I do know that Manhattan tends to have some of the highest home property prices within Kansas. Also know that the rent's higher too. So I know what the city has been attempting to do recently. They've talked about putting together a housing advisory board. And the purpose of that board would be to develop some of the best housing practices and some recommendations that would help find ways to provide more, they call it both workforce and affordable housing initiatives. And also, the commission stated that they wanted to see the board's scope to be a little bit more broad to also deal with providing some guidance or possible solutions on topics like home buyers' assistance or relocation assistance. Maybe turning some of these homes that have been divided into many rental units back to single family homes or offering housing renovation initiatives or even overall neighborhood revitalization. I think it's an important board to have. I'm kind of surprised by this point that we don't have it yet. I know that they are also conducting a study. And so part of the study was, you know, one of the initiatives was to build this advisory board. I'd like to see them not wait till that study's done. I'd like to see them actually go ahead and put the advisory board in place. I know there's been discussion about how to structure that board, if how many people would be on it. I've heard numbers like 15. Who would be, you know, somebody from the Post, somebody from the community, somebody from the Housing Authority, somebody talking about how many people you would have on this, what areas they would come from. I believe the Housing Board Authority, or I shouldn't say Authority, but the Housing Board should have also different representatives from a lot of the organizations, the nonprofit organizations that help with these issues in town. You have, oh, trying to think off the top of my head. And it's one that Matt J actually works with. And I'm trying to think of their name at the moment and I'm drawing a blank.
Is it the Manhattan Housing Authority?
Well, I know the Housing Authority is one of the, with Well, I know the Housing Authority is one of the, it's a nonprofit that was helping renters with a direct payment during COVID. M H K, that's not M H K night.
Is it Mutual Aid?
Mutual Aid, yes. Trying, oh, so hard. Good Shepherd's another one. I know that they help with if people have problems paying their utility bills or whatnot. But I know Mutual Aid was actually trying to give direct assistance, which I knew they were having problems getting some of the other nonprofits in town to work with them on that type of initiative. But I think a lot of these groups, even like Map J and renters together in M H K. You have a lot of different people in the community with voices that are trying to address the same problem and should be brought together to help address this. I think the commission, of course, can help after they've gotten some advisement from them. But I think we can do things like when we have large development projects, trying to ensure that there are multi-use developments, that certain amounts of that development is left for more low income. So they're more accessible, they are provided. But I think that mixed use development, I guess, is how is probably the better word for that. But I do think that the commission can do quite a few things, but I think they need a lot of guidance from the community as well. You know, we are five people up there and we may have some good ideas. But we're five people out of a community that's over fifty thousand. So I'm thinking there's probably a lot of ideas and knowledge that come from the masses compared to the five of us up there.
Yeah. How would you address the homelessness problem in Manhattan? And what steps should the city take in ending and preventing homelessness?
So I would say the first step that Manhattan needs to do is basically to develop an understanding of the types of homelessness that we're actually experiencing in our community. And then try to understand how prevalent those various types are. And because they each have their own underlying causes. There's different types of homelessness. There's chronic homelessness. Those are people who have been homeless for longer than a year. People who tend to struggle from chronic homelessness may have something that's kind of preventing them from keeping their or fighting their way out of that situation. It could be a physical disability, it could be an addiction, it could be a mental illness, it could be, you know, different familiar family issues. So trying to find out how many people are dealing with chronic homelessness. Then trying to deal with episodic homelessness. That could be people who've just had to experience, you know, um, COVID. You're going to have people who are maybe having issues episodic, I guess, is more they've had repeated experiences. But, you know, this might be more like our college students in town who find themselves every once in a while having to find another place to be. That may be that they are either struggling with health issues, economic issues. There may be some abusive home life going on. It may be teens who run away from home. To be dealing with addiction, it could be an unsafe home for a spouse. Those are those type of issues. We do have, you know, different community programs that help with those issues as well. So they would be somebody to talk to. We also have the transitional homeless. That's probably more the COVID that's like, hey, we had a natural disaster or we had flooding, you know. And while crack area, you lose your home and you're, you know, trying to deal with finding another place to be. So for a period of time, you're in transition, you're without a home. And then you've got hidden homelessness, which I think would be more like students, not at the college but K through twelve age students. That tends to go unreported. It's people who are couch surfing or, you know, you have families who are living together or somebody who's staying with relative or friends. Because they never really have a place that they can afford for their own. But those, because it's not listed, because you're staying in somebody else's place, you're not really ever counted. So we don't know how prevalent that is. But I would think that the school system may be a good place to ask because you have, you know, students who are either getting free or reduced lunch services. You may also know, you know, students that you're not able to ever really get in contact with to get, you know, the school reports to. So I think they're a good resource to try and figure that out. But because there are different types of homelessness and because they all have different reasonings underneath. It's hard to know because there's different programs that try to address those and I don't think that they talk to each other very well. So I think that's something else that the commission should request their so- social services advisory board to meet with those various community organizations. And just try to first all get a understanding of how much homelessness is there in Manhattan. And what is the biggest populations of those? So that we can try and start to work on those. But without that fundamental understanding, it tends to just be an one unknown. Yes, we know that there is, but we don't know how much and we don't know how to deal with it. So we at least need to pull back the curtain and do some of the work on that.
Great. How do you plan on working with members of the public and community organizations to solve these housing issues?
Well, besides trying to put in a housing advisory board and besides trying to bring these different groups together. I'd like to go and speak to these different organizations myself. I'd like to be able to have meetings with them before I'm elected, if I am. I like to think positively. But I want to know from them, what are the issues that they're having right now? What have they been frustrated by? What have been some really good successes that they've had too? It's not all about problems. I mean, some of these groups have done some fantastic things already, you know. So we may not have to reinvent the wheel. It's just they need a little bit more help on coordinating this one piece. Or we need the city to open up this type of facility for us or to inject some funds here or to coordinate something for us. You know, it's it's just getting there and being willing to listen. You know, I could talk all day, but I would rather hear others tell me what's going on. So that I can actually, if I get elected, do something with that.
Okay. Now, all we have left is the closing questions. So if you're elected, will you be transparent with your constituents throughout your whole term? If so, what forms of communication would you use? You know, like social media or through website or emails or letters? You know, any kind of communication to let, you know, your voters and the people who you are representing, you know, know what's going on?
First off, I'd absolutely be transparent. That's one of the things that just, you know, it's my my core. First thing I'd want to do is, and I've already stated on my my Facebook, I got frustrated with the city commission. During COVID, they started broadcasting their briefing sessions. Now, there's no agenda items in their briefing sessions, but they do kind of canvas with one another. Kind of talk, build rapport, but some of that is they're polling with one another on what they're willing to do and not do. And anytime you're talking about public work, that should be there in the open. And the fact that they broadcasted it during COVID on, you know, Facebook or whatever the city's website is that they have the live session for. They have decided since they've gone back to having regular open sessions at City Hall without restrictions of public numbers that they don't need to broadcast those anymore. Now, they still broadcast the regular work sessions and legislative sessions, but they decided the briefing sessions weren't necessary. If you really want to know what was going on, you'd come down there. It's not in my mind, okay, if you've expanded it to take it back. I think once it's there, it should stay there. I think you should expand things out further. It is mind blowing to me that we still expect people to come down to City Hall at seven o'clock at night, if they are in school, if they're working, if they have kids. To sit there for two, three hour sessions. I've done it because I am running, I want to know what's going on. But that would be the job I want to do and that's why I'm there and I would have the ability to do that. That's not true for everybody in this community. And it's not okay to say, well, if you have Cox Channel Three, you can see it there or you can watch it. You know, I'm fine with watching it later on on Facebook, but then you do find that some people, as we saw with COVID, have a real hard time with their internet or finding a good internet source that, you know, for them. It's not like it's cheaper free, you know, to have internet. So these are one of these like, yes, I guess you have to come down here if you want to see it, if you don't have the ability to do that. But once you open something up, you don't go backwards. That would be the first thing I'd be like, we're putting our recon sessions back on the the video. I would also state that I would, yes, obviously, use social media. I have different accounts. I have a Twitter, which actually you contacted me through. I have Facebook, I have Instagram. But also for years now, whether it be at the university or since I have started working in the workforce, I have always dealt with large amounts of email on a daily basis. I've been in admin capacity for a very long time. And if you email me, you're going to get a response. It may be, thank you for sending me this. I don't have an answer for you right now. Give me a few days, I will get back to you by such and such time. Then check back in if you still don't have an answer. But it's not a, oh, I don't have time, I'm just going to delete. That's never how you handle public requests for information. I'm there to work for you. So if you email me, if you, you know, send me a letter, you're going to get a response.
That's great. So the last question is, overall, what do you seek to achieve as city commissioner?
Well, I would hope that I would help make Manhattan a stronger, more inclusive place. That's also representative of the city as a whole. I would like to foster more public engagement initiatives, just like they have with the Crossroads M H K. I feel that the work of the public is not just done by five people. And there are plenty of people there at the city who work hard every day to provide services to our residents. There's like four hundred and twenty that are permanently there on full time. And then you have the seasonal workers that are there as well. But you also have residents who help do a lot of this work. As you know, through your organization or Map J or, you know, there's tons of different community programs that try and to provide services, the Manhattan Arts Center does too. It's to make sure that we're all working together to try and create a sense of belonging. To feel like the city is meeting your needs, to make you feel welcome and that you want to stay. To provide opportunities for people to stay after they finish at the university. We have far too many people who go and get these fabulous degrees and then don't stay here. Partly either we don't have the jobs for them or we haven't treated them very well as good stewards while they've been here. And so we need to make sure that we're improving upon those. We need to develop those job opportunities for sustainable growth. And hopefully make it a really good place to be.
Yeah, that's the goal. Man happiness. Well, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Man happiness for everyone.
Man happiness for everyone, yes, I love that. Well, Monica, I want to thank you so much for spending your Friday night with me answering some some great questions. So, yeah, thank you so much and I wish you best of luck on your your campaign.
Thank you. I hope I can also get a a copy of this. I would love to put out little clips on my page as well. I do appreciate the work that you guys have been doing and I would love to do more with Map J. And I I'm actually working with Jess Kerr right now on an initiative for Reno County. So I need to be getting with her. Yes, through our program together. So, but I think it's a, I think Manhattan's a great place to live. It's just, it could be better and I want to make it so.
Yeah, yeah, Jess is great. We've got, you know, with Map J, we've got a lot of exciting things planned. One of the things is getting a lot of organizations together to meet and talk and sort of help each other out. Share experience and knowledge and like tactics, like how do you organize, you know, your lists? And, you know, how do you showcase yourself on social media and stuff like that? To really encourage, not only for the existing organizations to grow and flourish, but encourage more people to make other organizations. Because you can, you can make a community organization with whatever you want. People make it with bike walk, like they they love biking and they want it to be a more friendly place for bikes. You could do it on, you know, if you want to do a marathon or if you wanted another for for pets, you think there needs to be more parks for pets, there's all kinds of stuff. So, yeah, having, you know, everybody working together and also working with the city or the county. I think, you know, the community organizations are more intentional to community because we're made up of community. And city commissioners are, you know, working with more the specialists. You know, you guys are working with architects, engineers, city planners, lawyers, all kinds of stuff. And so, you know, we get these two halves to meet, you could, you can make a lot of great change here.
That's the goal. I really, really hope that it it comes to be. I would, I think that there's a lot that can be derived from, like you said, from both, you know, those who are specialized. But also those who just live and, you know, work within the community. There's a lot of ideas and efforts that can be, you know, really well put together. And you don't have to have a fancy degree. You know, one of the things my my professor laughs at me when I, he's like, so it's going to be Dr. McFarlane, like, nope. I may have the title, but I will ask people to call me that. He sat there, he's like, why not? And I'm like, because why I'm getting it is for the educational purposes, to learn how to coordinate these things, to learn how to communicate, to learn how to be a leader in the community. Not because I feel like I'm this special person with a title, but because I want to be able to empower people to, you know, provide these services and to make things better for the community as a whole. I don't have all the answers. I'm not ever going to have all the answers. But, you know, I know who to maybe go ask and I do know the first part of learning anything is just to listen.
Yeah. You you can learn a whole lot just by getting some people together and, you know, talking to them. Because then, you know, once they put out their whole story and their experience. You know, you learn a lot from instead of just, you know, you might see something on social media. Yeah, and that's what we love to do is we we love having, you know, meetings and having the community come on board. Because ultimately, you know, we only know so much and we can only do so much. And having those different perspectives really puts, you know, it really gives us a bigger picture of what's going on. And then people are, you know, more excited, enthusiastic about doing that thing when they know you've listened to them and and that you really have their best interests at heart.
Right. And I think, you know, I think a lot of people can at least understand that sometimes, no, I'm not going to think that that's the best way to go forward. But if you are willing to listen to somebody and you're willing to take parts of what they are passionate about and try to incorporate it, it may not and try to incorporate it, it may not be the exact way they wanted it. But you can at least honor and respect the, the vision of it and find some way of having them be part of it still. I think they'll respect you for that, you know? It's just being empathetic and treating people as they have value. And I, I don't see why that is such a difficult thing these days, but I'm going to try my hardest.